Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome y'all to the progress city council meeting. And I will call the order the Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty four progress city council meeting, roll call.
Here. Here.
Paul Didmore, yeah, Cunningham.
Here.
Doug Stumble.
Here.
Chris Powell.
Here.
Two plus, here, bring grab, here.
A time for public comment. Would anyone like to say anything? All right, here and none will move over to the approval of minutes for the October twenty first, twenty twenty four regular city council meeting. And the October thirtieth, twenty twenty four special meeting of the progress city council.
One more second.
Do have a motion from Tony and a second from Mr. Alt. All in favor say aye. Opposing, so thank you, gentlemen. And treasures report, we have on here for the September report. And for anyone who had the opportunity to look at the email post about four fifteen, you got about a ninety-five percent when sent off. So we're going to have to move that again to next month. Just because you can't approve something that hasn't been completed. But we did want to send y'all what we had up to the point, just so you guys could start looking at it and then saw getting prepared. Yes, sir. That's what it was. And I think it was just one side of the bond funds, but most of it's there. And we will, we'll have to do a lot of, a lot of motions with the, with the treasures report going into next month. And so with that, we'll move on to unfinished business, which we have none. So then, new business. And with that, we'll open up for the discussion of the findings of the twenty twenty three legislative audit. Do y'all have any questions? I sent that out to y'all probably about a week, maybe a week and a half ago. The only one I did not send out and sent in front of y'all right now, which was the, the actual response from Mrs. Rachel, that's in the back from our court. And we will gladly answer any questions that y'all have for us as it pertains to them.
Larry, I know you have a little context, pretty consistent with what we've seen in years past, or what do you see as an anomaly or difference?
It is. I mean, it's the same. I don't want to say petty or minor because. But, but I'm kind of a player. You know, when you've got five million invoices and you're excited, they find one invoice that doesn't have a signature on it. So I don't think anything is there really controlled or anything like that. I mean, it's just an accident.
I don't recall. Was there, there's still findings related like separation of the.
Yes.
Always, you'll always have signings to separation of these that have prolonged up in here in every other city. If you look at our size of class, if you look at their office online, you'll see the exact same comment. So I was a member of several other organizations like Boston, not on the board there. They always get cited with the same thing. People always get cited with the same thing.
Mr. Alt, I will say that we, we probably will get cited for that again next year. But when I came in, you know, we would, we kind of heard those same words about this idea of there's only so much we can do. But because we're in a transition period, we're looking at every option. I think, I think we looked at all options before. But like every department head now is working with the bookkeeper on their, on their budgets. And so now we have more eyes on it. Different ways of signing things where it's going through two or three or four people because we all at the spot where we're growing with employees. So we do have more people to be able to put eyes on it. I don't know that I can sit in front of you today and say that it'll change going into next year, but I will tell you that we putting up many protocols to try to answer those questions.
Thank you for that. Cause I know, I know we talked briefly about last year on that one too. And so sort of that fiduciary responsibility of looking at the findings and saying, are there controls from separation?
And, and next year, there may actually be some findings just based on mistakes we've made in the last couple of months, trying to figure out how things were done.
Right.
But we'll explain those next year if, if that happens, so.
You, you have to state what your responses are going to be. And it has to be in the minutes that you have approved those responses.
You can accept the responses that were put in front of you. I mean, that's appropriate. Not if you have any recommendations or comments you want to make.
This needs to be in the.
I agree.
This. Move to accept the responses that were given for the audit.
I do have a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And with that, I'll turn it over to Larry Oridge for a presentation of the twenty twenty four budget.
Feel very blessed to just get you budgets. Based on our, we're very, very generous. So just getting those out is a major accomplishment. If you have any specific questions, I would ask if you want to have a special budget meeting, talk about those, or we could try to address those in writing. Can you, I'm prepared to ask or answer specific questions tonight. Number one, because I need to look at those and to ask them. Couple of things I will mention. The general fund admin, we're showing a much bigger transfer into reserves this year. The main reason for that is we transferred in the past, our park employees have been paid out of general fund admin. We moved those to the parking library funds. Now there is a, there's a positive impact to the general fund. There's a negative impact to the apartment library tax. Obviously there won't be as much surplus. But we still feel like there's a generous surplus in that account to cover that difference. So we, we made that change this year with the understanding that we've got two full-time park employees now, and we may be looking at some part-time labor, which we budgeted into the general funds in this budget. The other thing I would mention, if you look at the straight apartment budget, you will probably notice a two hundred and something, a dollar deficit. The reason for that is phase four downtown requires that we match twenty percent of the cost of that project. So the four million dollar project, eight hundred thousand of those falling in that. We're showing two hundred thousand dollar deficit. We got over two million dollars in reserves right now. I think we just spent a good chunk of that the other day. But we'll still have an over million and a half in there to pay our portion of that. And we feel a lot of the end of the year, so definitely seven, nine, two hundred thousand, even with that eight hundred thousand dollars that we're spending. So if anybody's got any broad questions about budgets, I'd be glad to answer them. If you got anything more specific, it'd probably easier on all of us if you would just reach out individually, or if you want to have a budget meeting, we can do that as well.
The December ninth would probably be the, you know, the Monday before our next meeting. If y'all want to have a, a budget meeting or a special meeting, or if y'all have any ideas, I know it gets a little bit busy.
There will be a few more tweaks too. I would say the general fund today, we're, we're working this call bill. And it's a little higher than what we anticipated. So I am going to have to make some adjustments. More to bonds and insurance, less in the reserves. So I'm probably going to cut the reserve down to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, the ninth.
What to tell me, is that the ninth?
You do it early.
So the fire department has a dinner on the ninth. Their, their Christmas dinner. And so we can either keep it on the ninth and try to set it early, like a five, five thirty meeting, or we can go the second. Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at Mondays, so. Do y'all have any ideas?
What gives you enough time to have it pretty good?
I like that week of cancer meeting because I would presume you probably want to try to adopt it to the next cancer meeting event.
We'll do December twelfth. That's the Thursday before. December twelfth. What if you would rather do December ninth early?
If we need forum, I will not be here Thursday, otherwise I don't care what you give.
We're not voting on anything. Anyone have any objections to December twelfth then? Here and none, December twelfth at six P M.
Yeah. And I would say if you got any specific questions, reach out to me ahead of time by email, and I'll try to answer them that way as well.
We did a, what was our colon this year?
Three.
Three.
I think the, we always use August numbers, you know, CPI in August was three point one. Second, it's actually drops since then, but.
We're buying the usual second vehicle, I'm assuming.
Yeah, truck already bought, truck, so.
Yeah, I bought a truck. An unusual deal. There was ten surplus at a dealership. They said, oh, he bought the price, they were, that's two hundred, about fourteen thousand dollars.
You forget unusual to the.
Chief, chief is only buying one this year, but it's not because he doesn't have the budget. He is choosing to use his money and, uh, in a different area by building onto the expansion, uh, by putting a, a metal building back there for equipment and maintenance. And so what we, what we had tried to do is to give every department head the, a basic budget that looked as, as of last year. So we didn't really change or tweak much as we have a, a few unknowns in front of us. And, uh, and then we just allowed the department heads to tweak their budget how they wanted to. So like chief, you can get two vehicles, or if you want this, then you're going to have to somehow pull it out of your budget some way.
And, and that budget under the same thing, the corporate budget under the sale, you expect. So that's where that money's coming from.
And mayor, that, that may change chief a little bit. What I was going to say is, um, I remember last year we talked quite a bit about, you know, training budget, chief, uh, for police department, I think Dixie, you know, some on fire too. As you look at budgets, I would just encourage that, that that training budget be pretty robust. I think it was pretty, pretty low the last few years for, for officer training.
I believe you raised it, but I don't want to, I don't want to overstate it.
It was, they were raised, you mentioned that last year. Appreciate it. Yeah, it was, it was, I think fifteen hundred dollars would increase to eighty-five. But originally the request was seventy-five, uh, last budget year, and it got increased to eighty-five.
All right. And so we have a special meeting on twelve, twelve, twenty-four at six P M. Here in the courts to talk, oh, you want to do it in the training room. Does it matter to you? Training room.
Ones over there might be a little easier to see.
All right. So twelve, twelve, twenty-four, six P M in the training room. And I'll send all of that out. And with that, we'll move on to the longevity bonus for the city employees. And Larry, would you like to say anything about it?
Got the figures there. Did you hand those out?
Um, I sent them out.
So they're all within the budget?
With, without finances since August, it's, I've been really hesitant to say anything's in the budget because we really, you know, today I'm seeing September for the first time. But we're only talking about the difference between what we had shown for twenty twenty four and twenty twenty three is probably about seven thousand dollars.
No, so I didn't, when I sent out, I sent out for the twenty twenty-three. So that way we, we will match in exactly what we did last year somewhere on this table. Uh, yeah, if we went up to the projected, it is, I'm sorry, no, new glasses. It is four thousand, six hundred dollars more.
Split over four or five departments. So, uh, general fund takes probably about fifty percent of that hit, and then the other departments take the rest of it. So it's not a tremendous amount of money either way. Additional, if the current amount of money to all of them, but the increase.
For all bonuses collectively, if we do the twenty twenty-three budget line item that we did last year is thirty-four thousand, four fifty.
Those, those are built into the budget on that.
If, if we add and we take that step forward to the, what we had for the twenty twenty-four, we'll add four thousand, six hundred, and it would be thirty-nine thousand, fifty.
So the only unbudgeted portion would be that four thousand and plus.
Yeah. And we usually even bump salaries up a little bit as long as we protect, just so we cut the things like this. I would say just from what I know for the August figures, there's only one department that I think this might put over budget. And if it does, it's not going to put it over much. We will make that correction in December. All the other budgets were running fairly, uh, low compared to budget.
If we split it, you might not know this math offhand, but if we split with the twenty twenty-three and then try to catch up in twenty twenty-five, do you know what the jump is there?
I mean, not offhand, you would be, so did, I think I sent this to all of y'all with the whole breakdown. And so really what you're, what you're doing is like, if you take the seven year, you're jumping it, you know, two hundred, hmm, about three hundred and twenty-five dollars in one year rather than taking a one seventy-five and a one seventy-five. But your, the premium is on the longevity, right? It's on people that's ten or more. And so when you think about the part timers, they get three fifty if you're on the twenty twenty-three projection. The twenty twenty-four is a three seventy-five and the twenty twenty-five is a four hundred. So they only jump in twenty-five dollars. It's the employees that are, that are ten years and over. And when we did, I don't have that one in front of me, but I can tell you real quickly, one, two, three, four, five, six. By next year, it'll be seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Twelve. So you're talking about thirteen employees total. That's, that's over ten years.
Thirteen.
Yeah. That over ten.
And so it's probably easier on a budget to jump four thousand to ten thousand, that's four thousand than eight, first. Nine to twelve or whatever in the long run.
The one thing I'll say is because you, you never want to necessarily go backwards. But obviously our twenty twenty-five projection, it, it puts to the point where Mr. Orange and when Mr. Orange is not here, like we're, we'll, we'll be talking about budgeting fifty thousand dollars just to give our bonuses at the end of the year. And, but I mean, the, the point behind the longevity bonus is so when people can go to Fayetteville and make a hundred dollars an hour more, but they have, you know, seven, eight, nine years invested in this that we, we try to retain those guys. So it's really about retention. But it does cost a lot of money and, and obviously it is somewhat counterproductive if we get to that spot and then have to back down, I don't think. And I mean, we've never had to back down before. So I mean, I don't see that happening, but it does, you will get to a spot where we approve in a, a big sum of money eventually.
Yeah, I think you're bringing up a good point. It's, you know, bonus, and I'm speaking more from a, the corporate perspective, it was based upon overall performance and all that. And you don't want necessarily families to become dependent upon that, uh, in case the, the city does have a bad revenue year, whatever that might be. But if we had a, a good year tax revenue wise, performance wise, all of that, then, you know, I, I don't see, I agree with Bree is, I would rather take small steps than, than try to catch up later. So what is actually needed on that? Hold on.
Well, wait, hold on. Well, we, well, we moved for twenty twenty-three, which was the same thing we did last year. Well, we moved for the twenty twenty-four year round pro- projection. And that's the difference of thirty-four, four, five, or thirty-nine. So. But Clayton, did you make the motion? I'm sorry. Oh, the, so, so I, I do have a motion by, by Mr. Clayton for the twenty twenty-four projection, which is thirty-nine thousand, fifty. It's a plus four, four thousand, six hundred. Then Mr. Oldridge had budget. I have a second from Mr. Stumble. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you all very much. And with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Oridge again for a software discussion, but about an inspection and code enforcement.
Real quickly, this, this is in the budget and it's under the building inspector line item. We increased the line item for this software. The total cost for next year, which includes the initial setup fee is eleven thousand, five hundred, and then actually per year drops to seven thousand. Um, they're actually needing something in writing from us by November twenty-ninety, which is why I bring this to the house, which is why we wait till budget approved. Um, again, this is in the budget for next year. Uh, we won't be making any payments until next year on this software. But I would like approval tonight to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with I works, uh, I work, I don't know how you pronounce that, but.
So.
This, this is comprehensive building inspector software. Basically it's everything from permitting all the way to the inspection. It ties everything together. So when Mr. Enix goes out on job, makes an inspection, he takes pictures with his iPad, he goes straight into the system. Uh, whatever his comments are on that inspection slip, whether it's approved, disapproved, or why he gets, gets emailed directly to the contractor, the contractor has it within minutes of him being there. So none of this going back and forth with the office has this inspection been approved. You know, what's the status of this? What's the status of my permit? It also allows them to permit online. So they can fill out all the paperwork, scan us all the documents through this system. And we'll have them all in central file. If I go to one twenty-one north border, I'll be able to see every activity for that house, probably the history of that house.
Also do your code enforcement.
It'll also do all your code enforcement as well with Congress. Almost will be tied to an address or a name or whatever you want to search for.
A couple of quick questions. Have you talked to other units, all these using the software and they seem pretty pleased with?
Actually, yes. And we actually looked at four different softworks. I worked for the one we wanted, um, not for a number of reasons. We felt like it was the best and wanted to look at. It's also to keep us in line. So it's spread out, it's, it's, Troy actually has experience when he worked at Dolph Estee Youth. Troy actually had some experience with my work already.
We're going to assume, I know it's a dangerous word, but it's looked like cloud makes it. We don't have to have storage here for that.
And we do have the option, we're giving, but this is what it's.
Yeah. And you already said it's in the, it's something that was budgeted for.
It's budgeted for twenty twenty-five. It's in the budget that I'll keep it approved in December. But we need to sign, we need to sign off on it before November twenty-ninth. And with that, we get a couple of free iPads to use in the field as well. So they get thrown in for free.
And make a motion to authorize the mayor to, uh, be able to move forward with, uh, uh, not negotiating, but, uh, authorizing the purchase of the software.
Second.
I do have a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Now we have a discussion surrounding Haven waiver for one twenty-seven South Porter Street by the planning commission. And once again, we, we have Mr. Oridge to speak with us.
Okay, that's, that's very topical there. It says driveway variance request. It's actually driveway waiver request. And the city has two procedures for waiving on the payment of residential driveway. And they're listed there. One of them, we, we've approved several times in the past, but the property has to be zoned agricultural for that one to go into effect. And the driveway now has to exceed a hundred feet. But, you know, we've had, I don't know, what, three, three or four of those over the last few years where somebody has a large tract of land, it's zoned agricultural. The driveway is long and they don't want to pave it. Uh, the second procedure there is, um, it's a different procedure in the fact that it requires the planning commission to approve it and the city council to approve it. So I'm not really sure why one only requires the planning commission, the other requiring both, but they're, they're slightly different. The second one is when there's an existing driveway and it's a non-conforming use. Uh, an existing driveway means it's been there for long enough that before there's a regulation requiring it to be paved. So it's not conforming. And it's not illegal. It just means it's not conforming, but they can provide a waiver for that. Uh, if they, you know, if somebody requests it and he can justify it. In this case, the driveway isn't over a hundred feet long. It's a hundred and sixty-three, twenty percent, a hundred and sixty-eight feet. Thank you. And that driveway has been there for as long as I've worked for the city. So it's been there for forty-five years. It went back to a garage shop building back in the backyard. The back of the property was split. And gentleman has now built a house attached to that garage. So that garage is part of the bigger structure now. It's been attached to the house. I think he has a number of reasons why he doesn't want to pay it. And he is here tonight. If he wants to, uh, hear his reasons, he'd be more than happy to stand up and address those. But planning commission did make a recommendation that it be approved.
So if you have a question. Dirt or is there gravel under the grass?
It's, it's got gravel path, correct?
Recured surface.
Go ahead, step up there.
Yeah, actually, I put a couple of loads of gravel on there since I acquired the property in, um, fourth end of January. Uh, because it just really needed some, but you don't want to build that up. Or to me, I wouldn't want to build that up and pavement and or concrete because all of that property from the very back of that, which is I don't know, probably, um, eight hundred feet off of the street there, all slopes towards border street. And, um, there's a, quite a bit of water comes down through there, which if you start trying to make a pavement or a blacktop or whatever, you're going to basically make a, a dam that's going to flood that gentleman's house there to the left and also one on the right. That's just my interpretation, what I would say. And the other thing is there isn't a storm, but one storm drain that's almost right there to the very left of that. After that, everything else is surface runoff. And, um, I would see that water becoming more of a, a bigger problem. I've seen that actually kind of get running across the street. So, you know, and not that I'm going to leave it just look that way because I built a new house there. I don't want it to look, you know, dilapidated. I want to make it look nice, but I also want to sit there and try to be uh, a good neighbor for both sides of that before we sit there and do a lot to it. Um, but I think to me initially, probably just leave it as a gravel up around the house. I want to put some, you know, concrete or, uh, papers or something like that, or something that will allow the water to be um, taken into the ground and blew up just wrong.
And I'll add, the question was asked at the planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, if there was any other driveways in the area that were gravel. This is an older neighborhood. So many of the driveways in this neighborhood are gravel.
This is the last house, um, or last property of this magnitude that's in that area that we, that won't even be done like this. I just feel fortunate. I actually found it and it's been sitting there for, as Larry probably said, for many years. And the gentleman had that shop, I think, I don't know if he's past where it's going or whatever. So I just feel fortunate that I can get that and, and use the garage now as a garage for the home and build a house beside it. We just cherish the property behind it. We want to keep it exactly the way it is. We're not going to do anything. We're not raising giraffes or anything like that back there. So, um, that's, that's really my only request. And, um, now in the future, if we put a, if the city chooses to put a storm drain all the way down through there, because I know people's had a probably a couple of issues down through there, that'll be the city's choice and how that's addressed in the future. And that's, that's, that's not my realm of expertise. So.
Is there a culprit in the driveway or not?
No, it's not. On Cleveland Street, there is.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I mean, his driveway, is there a culprit there on board?
No.
There's no, no.
No. Right there where that grass that leaves to the left, that's where the storm drain goes underground.
There's a, there's an inlet right here where it goes down Cleveland Street. And so it actually turns and goes east right there. And that's done when my Cleveland Street was concrete.
Did the other driveways in North Howard forward like that?
About half of those driveways down through there, and I say half, four or five are just like this one. A few of them are blacktops. Some of them are partially paved. It's kind of a menagerie of different things in there. It's not just one application fits all of there.
All that water that comes down past your house, Doug, and it comes down.
And I've seen two or three residences down there trying to address it and make that ditch deeper to be able to accommodate that water coming down. Because it gets pretty rapid coming down through there. But that's, that's my request. And, um, we're actually ready to move in. Um, so this is really my last hurdle and obstacle that, um, if y'all have seen that, I appreciate it. And if we see we want to do something down the road, of course, I'd be willing to accommodate that too. That's about all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pretty familiar with that property. By the way, I love the trees in the, uh, in the backside of.
Did you get all of them?
And I, I agree with your, my, my non-engineering assessment, building that up, not much, could cause problems for that yellow house on the side. I said that's my non-engineering. I don't know if there's, mayor, if there's any conversation with the neighbor, with that, that person that owns the yellow house.
Rick, Rick is his name. He's from Evelyn. I know him pretty well now. Yes. And I don't want to, I think we would impose on him, we talk with colleagues. That's my thought.
So I, I, I support that, uh, request.
Do you need a vote on it, Larry? Yes, we, we have a motion.
We don't have that resolution or orders, but we do just have something in minutes.
Is it a request for, uh, variance? West for, I made a motion that we accept a request for waiver.
I do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. The two Ricks. Rick Alt was the first, Rick Clayton was the second.
Thank you, sir.
It was a pleasure meeting you, sir.
You're our favorite kind of people. Absolutely.
And we do have an update on our issues with Code Red. As most of y'all, well, not just most of y'all, but even our citizens know, we had a, we had a tornado come through on, uh, the morning of Halloween, October thirty-first. Code Red is our supplier that gives out the alerts to our citizen base. Code Red is our supplier that gives out the alerts to our citizen base as far as take cover. And when, uh, when we, me and Mr. Overidge had about an hour and a half meeting originally, what they were able to confirm is that they sent out three messages to our whole city or our whole base when that came. So the truth is, it was a failure and there's no way of getting around that. I, I sent y'all the, the words from that lady that's sitting in front of y'all today. She didn't send that to me till about four thirty this evening. And then I sent y'all an email last week as far as the conversation that me and her had. Post this is, this is after the original conversation and he moved us up to the manager end of things. And they were gonna do some diagnostic checking. And so here's the short for everyone sitting in here. It's, it's IT, and when it's IT, there's failures. And it just so happened that they did an update a few weeks before and, um, the update did not. I don't know how to say it. It failed. That's the truth. And, uh, and so that leaves us in a, in an awkward spot where I, I think even Larry would say, and he's gonna talk a little bit about the sirens and maybe even our relationship with Code Red, that for years, we've had a good relationship with them, but when we needed them the most, it failed. And so we have to decide what we want to do as a city council to make sure that we're doing the due justice to, to protect our citizens. And so that is stick with Code Red, accept what they told us. There was a failure on that part. It'll never happen again. Or what is our next step?
What, what contractual obligation are we under now, if any, as far as when does the contract expire?
We signed a yearly agreement with them, which I'm not sure when it expires, probably February or March. Just keep in mind too, uh, Code Red is almost universal in Washington County. It doesn't cover Fayetteville, Springfield, but it covers, we require Red Bull County, including the rural areas. Farmington is a customer of Code Red, Washington County is a customer of Code Red, uh, Elkins, Lincoln, Ellen Springs, all the smaller communities. And so Code Red has a presence in Washington County other than just us.
And will you tell us, give us a little back history on the sirens, because I know you and I've talked about it, but I think it's a good.
Back, back history, nineteen ninety-seven, the city decided to install a siren system. And at that time, we did a lot of research, looked at presentations from probably four different siren companies that came in and pitched their products. The thing you gotta remember about a siren system is they are not tornado sirens. Everybody calls them tornado sirens. You will never see one marketed as a tornado siren. They will say outdoor warning sirens is what they will be marketed as. Because they are not designed to be heard indoors during a storm. There's just too much ambient noise, too much noise inside the house. If it's new construction, which ninety percent of our houses are now, uh, they're not built to hear outside noises. So if you've got a siren system, probably if it goes off, ninety percent of the populace will want to hear it. That's not to say they won't. If they open the door, if they go outside, they might be able to hear it. But they're not designed in the middle of the night to wake you up. Um, we talked to them when they, after they first installed it, we went with the company and, uh, we weren't satisfied because the first few times we tested it in broad daylight and good weather, half the town was calling us saying they didn't hear. And so we didn't trust them, so we actually got all the data from them. And there is a certain level that they're allowed to go to on a decimal level before they can't go any higher because it can actually impact the hearing of people that crowd on the streets. So they're as loud as they're allowed to manufacture, that's how loud they're like. We brought in city, they did testing for us and we did decimal testing and they met every one of the criteria that they were designed to meet. Still for eight years, whenever time we would test them, we would get complaints. There were people that'd say, I live right across the street and I didn't hear. Uh, good example is the elementary school. There's a siren that sits right across the driveway, right next to the elementary school. If you're inside that elementary school, you will not hear that siren when it goes off. We've, we've done it multiple times and you can't hear it inside the building. So I'm not saying sirens, I think they make people, people feel good knowing that they're there. But they're a huge investment, I think, from very little impact on what they actually do. Uh, at the time, we spent eighty thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-seven to put in three sirens. We had approximately three square miles and, uh, siren will do, if you do a circle radius, they'll do about one mile. So at the time, we did the circles on the map and we identified that three would almost cover the city limits. There were some outline areas and it didn't quite rekeep them with three, but that's what we went with. Those sirens today would cost you probably seventy-five thousand dollars a piece and we can tend them. So we would need an investment to put sirens in at this time, probably three quarters of a million dollars.
And Larry, on the current Code Red system, that's still a, a user sign up and put in their phone number. So, so what we would have to think about too is if we did want to change, if, let's say the contract expired in March, there's not enough runway to educate, change phone numbers and all of that.
There, there are a lot of other companies out there and there were a lot of other companies wanting to code red because we saw presentations from at least three.
Yeah, I had, I had actually heard of weather person one dissing Code Red during the tornado and saying he would never use it and all that. But at a high level, as I know, Mayor, we've talked about, you know, emergency management and possibly a, you know, a focus of its committee, whatever that might be, but well, I don't suggest we make a change immediately. That's probably a good topic for, you know, emergency management experts to look at along with police and fire and others.
I think we're probably, we'd be, we're gonna reach out to Washington County, talk to John Loether and see what kind of experiences they've had. They actually went to Code Red after we did. We and Farmington, I think, went on at the same time. And then the county spent a lot of time and energy looking at systems and they ended up with Code Red as well.
Yeah, I think the tough part is, you know, because of that lack of the alerts going out, we lost somewhat of the trust and confidence of a lot of the citizens.
I think that, you know, there was two issues tonight and that was to give an explanation. And then second was Facebook and our citizens wanted to know about sirens. And it's hard to answer on Facebook, and I'm not saying that every citizen's here and obviously we recorded, so, um, it can be played back as far as on, on YouTube. But the truth is, I think we needed to kind of understand what the sirens give us, how much it would cost us to invest in sirens, and if the sirens are a better option than, than an actual, whether it's Code Red or another IT format, you know.
Been repeatedly repeated on Facebook and other social media venues that, uh, the reason the city quit using these in nineteen, or two thousand twelve, I think, two thousand eleven, I can't remember what year it was, was because they didn't want to pay to maintain the sirens. That had nothing to do with it. Uh, the reason the city made the decision was because we kept getting complaints, people with the sirens weren't working. And so they started looking at other options, but it had nothing to do with the cost to maintain those sirens.
I know we've talked about this before, but have we looked any more into a communication system we have that goes to all our, like, users of water?
So Koozie, the, what y'all just bought as far as our water bill and does that, it just, it just meant in the midst of it, we would have had to stop and do it. And I, I mean, I didn't think about it. I'll say that. That way I can only be accountable for myself. I got the phone call from chief that said, we got problems, get out here. And then, you know, I was trying to do updates on Facebook, but I didn't even think about Koozie. But your answer is yes, we do have a format already where we can do mass text messages, Chuck?
But, but those aren't automatic, so certainly. And if it's in the middle of the night, you know, good luck if somebody's standing up and listening to the weather.
Well, I just was thinking, our security system, that's the alert I got on my phone. I didn't get the Code Red. Better security system alarm on my phone. So I didn't know if there was some sort of cloud-based or web-based system people could sign up.
National Weather Service, I think that it will, it'll wake you up. I don't care how big the city you're in.
And I almost wonder if it's more a communication issue on our end to help push out all the different things, the signs, Code Red, uh, whether it be on the back of the water statement or whatever for people to know. I mean, I, several people I read on those threads, you know, what if we don't have a cell phone? What if we just, they should do the information themselves, but we know that's not always the case, giving them ones that we for us, they're nationally recognized, free systems.
And I don't know if anybody that doesn't have some kind of follow-up, if it's landline, it'll still call landline. So if I'm called with a type of phone, it has, it'll, you know, it'll send a notice to any kind of electronic device you have as far as text messages.
Larry, does Code Red have the capability for us to send out messages or is it strictly the passer? So, so that mechanism can be.
We knew that should come right out of bed as well.
Yeah, that's right.
Mary the other day, when, uh, Sonny was married, he was very reluctant, because you, you're allowed so many messages and so many words and characters per year. He was always worried we were gonna go over, so I think we underutilized it. But, uh, we can use it if Charles lost her. I mean, there are many things that we can use it for, gas line ruptures or, but we do have capabilities. Again, though, it's only gonna send out phone messages to the people that are in that situation. Right now, what did she tell us was the, it was more, it was a higher percentage when I bought it.
I wish, I wish I'd have brought my notes in, but it was, it was very, very high, four thousand.
I was thinking, I'd had almost five thousand numbers that they had in the system, so that's probably good.
I know we pushed it a few years ago. We really did a marketing campaign to have people sign up for Code Red and, and, uh,
You know, we did Facebook posts every year at least twice, but, you know.
We may think about if, I don't know if we can add them to a water bill, but obviously we have new customers coming in constantly, but, yeah, maybe to, to just do that, pick it three times, uh, three times a year to, to just do an. I look at the, the, the amount and that's.
I just, we have lost trust in Code Red and the constituents have lost trust in us, because they think that goes together. But if there was some sort of marketing push from the city on different ways to get signed up for the future, I think that would be very helpful to people with the explanation, explanation of what happened, why we don't use them. I, I think people just wanted that. And so how we get that out, will determine if they are happy or not.
Okay, I agree. And a lot of it's how things work together. We had mentioned sort of the, the redundancy of a Code Red didn't work. Then what are other things that citizens can sign up for and, and that? And I, I still go back to, you know, maybe over this next year from a, a, a preparedness perspective and emergency management, to just consider all of those pieces. I don't think we would want to, you know, immediately call Code Red and say, we're not gonna renew the contract because there's just not enough runway.
I, I do think too, as we're talking about this with our constituents, our city, our citizens, uh, this was not a normal storm either, and that's what people need to realize. Everybody's complaining about, by the time they got the notice, well, even the weathermen were talking about, they didn't know this storm itself was even existed until minute before it hit. So it just popped up all of a sudden. It wasn't anything that was really on where even the National Weather Service could predict it. So I don't care what system you have, sirens would have been set up on land if it was open too, if we'd had sirens. Because a man would have had to do that. Somebody made one. Probably we wouldn't have sent them off until after the storm. I don't know what the answer is when you have, you know, this type of storm. And they're, storms are unpredictable sometimes.
I think, you know, Mr. Mayor, not to be pandering, is I think even here, having the citizens know that you, the, the city has followed up and, and that means a lot. Uh, so I agree with sort of breeze contextual or just continuing the discussion and the transparency of the discussion is, yeah, there were some things identified technically with Code Red and we're evaluating what, uh, what the response needs to be, nothing more.
We continue to reevaluate if we want to. We need to talk to other agencies in Washington County and see what their experiences are. Also maybe see what other options are out there. Technology's definitely changed. Code Red has changed a lot since we signed on to it.
I mean, and you can let them know there's other free services and they can sign up for themselves. You know, they don't have to, or they can do IQ weather, like you said. I mean, they, they can take their own responsibility to sign up for something.
Oh, that's the level of their alarm, but it'll get you out of bed.
I'm taking notes and I'll, I'll make the post tomorrow morning.
I mean, it's, it's kind of like, if you're that worried about it, sign up for something else too.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other discussion, ladies and gentlemen? Yes, sir.
Does Code Red have a, a test or anything that goes out?
Well, not that I know of. I've never, not that I know of, sir. I don't think so. And we've had them for years since twenty twelve and we've, I mean, that's twelve years. To my knowledge, there's no test.
Yeah, I think it's a great question from a, you know, a, a exercise perspective. And once again, how do we exercise those communication capabilities? And so we know now, this technical issue probably would not have been identified through an exercise, but you never know.
And sir?
Just one other option, what about weather radios? You can set them to alert just for Washington County. We, I mean, we have one. I think it goes back to just all of these things together from an emergency management perspective.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the citizens? All right, with that, we'll move on to the reports of the committee. Sanitation, Sue Pluck.
Uh, everything's going really good. Um, I want everybody to realize just how quickly you're infected. Cleaned up that storm. I mean, I can't thank them enough. They really answered the call and, and put in the long hours and assisted, uh, with the other entities that came in and all this cleaning up. We had a lot of outreach, those around communities and the counties and, uh, they come to a lot and the family. And we were very lucky. We got, you know, your local city, we get our worst, you know, you realize that, you know, other, other than, in fact, we were infected, but it could have been a whole lot worse. And one of the things we want to bring up here, Jenny, take the, the brush pickup. You know, we hold off. I mean, tons and tons of brush that we cleared from people's driveways and, and people's properties. And we do this year around in the free service. With the amount of customers we have now and the amount of brushes coming in, we're having a hard time. In the past, we've always took it out and put it behind the wastewater plant. And periodically we burn it on a rainy day, but then it becomes a nuisance to the surrounding community because now it's been developed all the way around it. So anything that we do in the future, I believe it's gonna start costing people. We're gonna start taking, then we'll, that's our taking people into the mountain. And then it'll be an additional cost because we're already paying trucks, drivers, staff to go pick it up. Um, I would like to think about in twenty twenty-five, moving away from curbside pickup for brush and the weeds. So, uh, I know it's been a really good, uh, service for our community, but I believe our community's grown to the, the point where it's gonna be a financial burden as we get.
What can we, uh, look at, like what Taylor does, that bond and mulcher and, and mulch, and mulching it and then selling?
We do that, but when we get, when we collect the stuff, there's usually so much debris, plastic bags, things like that that are mixed with it that you can't use the compost or anything. You know, there's a lot of foreign objects in there and a lot of things that they're just not really made for. We, we tried.
We, if I say we did that for a little while.
When I first came here, we had a big pile out there and, um, and I actually went up there and turned it over a couple of times to help load it up for people. And once they realized just how much of a pa- plastic bag and different foreign objects were mixed in with it, they turned it down.
Was that, we, we used to allow people to go out to the, to the plant and dump theirselves, right? And that's why we were getting a lot of the trash.
Uh, we were letting tree services go out and just, uh, dump what they had shredded with their chippers and shredders. But then we'd go out there and start scooping it up and there would be tree trunks, large limbs of stuff mixed in with it that we couldn't utilize.
It'd surprise how many biodegradable bags that we've picked up over the years, leaf bags, biodegradable ones, you know, pothos. Well, they'll, they'll put just enough leaves on top that it conceals all the trash underneath. And they will literally fill them up with trash for that eye and then put leaves or grass on top of it. Then we get out there and, you know, when they start decomposing their trash.
Mr. Rob, did you have something to add? I don't think it's, I, I'm kind of interested in the defable side of things, just on the idea of.
It's a tub grinder, which is a much larger machine, a tub grinder, uh, unless you throw a T-post or something in there, it'll handle, you know, huge pieces of wood that you throw in there. But, uh, you know, those things are a hundred fifty thousand dollar for a good tub grinder.
My, in my mind, I was thinking it's not a bad service, but you'd probably have to have someone out there to manage it.
Yeah, maybe that's something in there that's all there is when it gets dumped. Then also you have to have a piece of equipment out there every day that turns over the compost so that it will biograde and do what it needs to be done. And you'd have to do it in stages. And, uh, and it takes months before the, the product, the end product. And so they end up with more and more housing of your product out there that pays a lot of money.
And so if we're not composting it and we're not periodically burning it, what, I think what Mr. Wally's saying is then it has to go to Boston Mountain or. Or it has to go to some kind of transfer station, which costs us money, but right now we do it as a theoretically as a free service and.
That's one part of it. It's illegal to take it to a land.
So then we, we just stockpile.
Could we take it and charge the customer, uh, charge the person, the landowner?
Yes, ma'am. And we do, when we say, because the first, first fifteen minutes or thirty minutes of sales free, we, we pick up a lot free. Um, and then after that, if you put out a big pile, then it's a charge. We a lot cheaper than normal tree services, obviously. But what, if you just put out a, enough for your thirty minute window and then next week put out enough. Now, most people don't do that because you're just chopping down a tree, but we do have people that just trim. You know, regularly, and that's the way it goes.
I think that's the big difference is, you know, I would hate during a, thereafter, a disaster. Not to be able to provide some services there.
That is what we're discussing here. We're talking about just the curbside year round.
A, a disaster declaration, then, you know, you could use those services, but the, I'm not as concerned of the, the, hey, I trim my trees and. You know, put it out on the, the curb and having to, all of your point, pay somebody to come pick it up or whatever that might be.
And I don't know, and it's, it's, obviously it's something that we need to just discuss further. But I don't know how much of a burden it becomes on our citizens if we don't do it. We just realize that we either take the burden. And then we have to figure out the financial aspects of that burden, the, the continued burden because we already have it in our hands. And whether or not we should charge more for it, but it, you know, it's. It's no different than any other service that goes to the home. Is that someone, you have to pay someone to come do that service. And a lot of times when people come to cut down a tree, that tree service takes the tree with them. Except for here in Prairie Grove, because we pick it up for free. So. In essence, the tree service comes out, cuts it down, drops it on the ground, they leave. And then we come back and pick it and then we have to start and figure out what to do with it on the backside. And that's where. The, it's, it's not that a hundred percent of what we're doing is wrong. It's just that a big portion of it is costing us a lot of money and it's really just saving the tree service.
The tree service, they can, they have to get permit, right? I mean, I, I don't understand why they would, I mean, the one is my neighbors did it behind their house and the, the tree service took the whole tree with them.
What happens a lot of times is the homeowner, knowing that the city will pick it up for free, they'll get, they'll get a price from the tree service. Okay, if you take the tree down, it's this cost. If you clean the whole thing up, it's this cost. And when they find out the cost is about double for cleaning it up, they say, oh, I'll just let the city clean it up. They'll do it for free. So, uh, we end up, yeah, this has been happening for years. I mean, I used to complain about this twenty years ago, that the tree services would come in and. Cut the thing down and we need to mess with us.
Guess we need to fix that.
Well, when we just, if, if we want to keep on doing it, we just need to raise our prices because we're a lot lower than the actual tree service. So no matter what the citizen saves money, which is great for our citizen base, we're just running out of a spot to handle it.
Yeah, we added more hours to our part-time personnel last year.
Right, I remember that one. Yeah, they go.
Well, it's getting to be a year-round profit, you know, not just a four or five months that the grass is.
So we, we need to discuss fees is what we discussed then, right?
If you want to keep doing the curbside pickup, when you start addressing the car.
What is the backside of not picking it up? Just stuff flying around everywhere?
More people would have to deal with the problem.
Be a lot more fire.
And you're going to find junk sites all over the place where people go dump.
Or they leave it.
Farm, Farmington does not provide any brush or parkway service. Uh, we'll, I think the place manager will pick up, uh. Leaves if you buy bags from them, but they don't pick up any brush. So I guess, I mean, I'm not saying a huge problem in part of it.
Anybody else in the?
Yes, sir. Myself, I mean, we don't have a lot of property. We're, we're going to track all that over here again, for the notice. But whenever I trim my trees, I'll make arrangements. All part will trailer from my neighbor. I'll haul it over to Boston Mountain to take care of it myself.
Well, that's what people should probably do.
It's what we can elect to have them do. And then that's not a, that's not a deny, a tonight decision, but it's just something to, to be aware of and to be talking about, yes, sir. And, uh, and that way, when we go into next year, we can kind of have some, some better discussions on what's our long-term plans for. For brush pickup. Before we move on to street, I will say what, what Chuck started with. When we talk about the tornado, obviously, that first twenty-four, even forty-eight hours was. Like, I think we were all kind of swimming trying to figure it out. But you know, that, it happened on a Thursday and by Monday, we had everything picked up. The whole city was picked up, brushed debris. Everything was picked up. We did have Washington County come in and help us. So kudos to Judge Pat- Patrick Jenkins and his street crew. But when you think about a five-day period to have everyone that was impacted picked up. I can't say enough to give kudos to, to our street department, our sanitation. And even our, our water workers, because everyone went in and, and they did a great job.
And they, they volunteered to come in and assist. And we can afford that with some other volunteers. And we ended up just telling the volunteers, hey, we already got it.
They were working hard. I drove them down and they was working hard everywhere I saw.
And, and there was a lot of volunteers that just came up and started cutting. And, and deep in the yard, they didn't know and they could stack it up by the street. So we just kept circling those same areas and as it piled up, we just picked it up.
And so street department, um, would defer to Chuck.
Uh, street department, uh, we're just working in the downtown area, going to try to do some sidewalk maintenance. Where we put in new services on Mont Street. Uh, there's some other street cuts for some other services that were going on on Cleveland. Other than that, we're doing really well. Uh, we did meet with the county today to talk to them about a gravel road that's a diversity limit that has been. Subject to several conversations with the people that live out there. And me and the mayor met with them this morning and we went out there trying to. And the idea that we were going to sell something, they told us that there was a schedule that hasn't paid. We'll just work out the finances later.
And we will, it's a fifty-fifty split as far as the road's concerned. It sits right on our edge and. We own one side of it, literally the road splits down the middle. We on one side, they on one side. So we know what that split will be fifty-fifty. Is it less than, well, they're going to go spur that. And, uh, and we don't, we honestly don't have it in our budget because we're spending so much money downtown. But it goes back to the relationship that we're building with Washington County that we've probably had for, for many, many years. But in essence, they're giving us all the way to twenty twenty-six, so we can look at our budget going into next year before we even have to, to reimburse them.
They are working with right away acquisition and what he's missed the property on the center area. They've already sent out certified letters to get that started. And, uh. So, yeah, they, they really have done the heavy lifting on this one already.
Doesn't this one need to be wide?
They want to go twenty-five feet from the center of the road for their drainage improvements and, and then the driveway.
The width isn't as big a problem as their drainage.
Very similarly to picket ridges that we did last year. So they will take those numbers to them and, uh, I think they're going to bring the road base up about eight inches. So that the transition coming off of sixty-two highway is not near as, you know, it's a slope. And then they'll, they'll give them some additional.
All right, thanks, sir.
Chuck, real quick on, on downtown, any, any updates from R dot?
Meeting this afternoon to schedule another more intense and more. In the morning, yeah, we're meeting with everybody involved, uh, uh, an update on where we're at with the, uh, environmental impact.
No speculation at this point of, you know, shovel the dirt.
No, and, uh, I think the engineers start to feel our frustration. And that's the reason they met with me today and then coming back to the point.
Warren Sewell, Doug Stumble.
Kind of wrap up everything that we did downtown with two A. Uh, we'll be meeting with those same engineers sometime tomorrow for the cut cap of the old lines. I asked Larry to meet with us as well because he's more familiar with some of those old lines down there. And, uh, but we'll have that brief meeting tomorrow and hope to finalize that project out. Uh, wastewater expansion, uh. Very close to being finished. There's a couple of things with the monitoring system. It's supposed to be installed early this spring. It's not done. I will not give them significant completion until that's done because it's part of the contract and, and so.
And you're starting on year three.
Starting on year three, the first week in December, it'll be in our third year. So for this expansion, so. But one of the things that I do want to talk about is, uh, after the so five, you know, a lot of y'all had to go through practice for that. Two of the things that we had to do was a lead line inventory for service lines. Uh, we sent that letter out last week. Uh, we'll see if we should get it today or tomorrow. When we do that, we had a certain amount of time that we had to complete it. It was October the eighteenth, I believe, this year. So the state hired a contractor to come in and assist with all these inventories and. When we had them come in, all they did was take a list of all of our service agreements. And then say, okay, you have three thousand two hundred sixty-five lines that we don't know what they are. It varies, it was very vague. It was, I mean, we could have done it ourselves. It was just a bill form. The fortunate thing is it didn't cost us anything. It helps us with compliance with the EPA on the lead inventory. But we have to send out a letter to everybody saying if you have a service line that was installed prior to nineteen eighty-nine, it may have led. And some of you may have already seen some of these go out this year where they were on the news with Benton, uh, District One, I think Senator went to it. Uh, we can, I think had something going on a couple of weeks ago. When they sent these letters out, it caused us panic. And so everybody starts calling them. They want to know what's going on with the lead in our lives. It's beyond the meter. And so if it were put in prior to nineteen eighty-nine, you may have it because that's when it didn't know that rule for fittings for water.
And just an example, in forty-five years, I've never seen a lead pipe in any house in Prairie Grove ever. But we still have to send a letter out that says it may be.
And periodically we have to do sampling in people's homes for lead and copper. We've never had a significant deficiency with it.
The only lead you'll find in pipes in Prairie Grove is in the solder that was used to solder copper pipes back in the sixties and seventies. That had led in.
So that was sent out last week. And so we're anticipating a lot of phone calls next week, probably starting tomorrow, but it'll be in everybody's middle. The other one that we had to do, which is prior to next year in June, was our rate study in twenty twenty-five. Well, we decided to go ahead and do it this year so we'd know what our numbers were realistically going into the budgets. Those numbers about five thirty today in an email and I gave it to Larry already. Uh, so we'll probably bring it up sometime after the first of the year. The recommendation was a four percent increase on year one and then three percent annually after that as growth dictated. And then on sanitary sewer, three percent annually.
And the act mandates that you adopt these. We don't have a choice.
And the deadline was next summer, so we have a few months to be able to bring this back with the numbers and what they will actually do. But you can, uh, look at four percent on the water side and three percent on sewer. And then three percent for each after the first year.
How often do we have to do the rate studies?
Every five years.
Every five years. What do we have to do the rate increase for five years?
Depends on what the study says.
This says annually, each year, you know, four, four percent on the first year and three percent annually after.
Basically, they're taking it out of the hands of the utility and they're putting it in supposedly the neutral party, but.
We had them do it, uh, we had a contractor come in and do it, then me and Larry visited with them about two weeks ago. And we brought up the fact, his, his first initial number was a nine percent increase. And we told them we needed to. And, and some of the other things.
Which is one of the problems I have with somebody else coming in doing that. They just don't know.
Larry hoped to cut it half, exactly.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the courts, Rico.
Fortunately, collections for the, uh, month of October were down quite a bit. Uh. Total collections for twenty twenty-three in October was thirty-seven thousand eight eighty-three. Total collections for twenty twenty-four was twenty-nine thousand one thirty-three. Uh, the city's portion last year was twenty-three thousand three fifty-eight compared to, uh, sixteen thousand forty-five. Uh, this month, so very not what we wanted to see, uh, from a budget perspective.
And file department, Rico.
Um, I'll defer to chief. I will say, I was talking to chief a little bit earlier. He sent out the, uh, the report for the month and it shows you here today. So the month of October have higher responses, uh, for the month as far as volume than any other month. So when they said he's busy, we, we've got the numbers to prove it.
Your data shows, I mean, we're up about thirteen percent.
Anything else?
Thank you, gentlemen. Fox and Rick, Chris Paul.
Um, yeah, I'm just kind of focused on after the tornado with the, uh. The destruction of the reparks it did. It will, you know, that's what like I said, I always give to Chuck and his crew and. They're out there cleaning it up and we, you know, we got there on Saturday and picked up two and, and, um. We, you know, Chuck and his crew made it safe, uh, you know, only in base in it, everybody seen it, but it blew the whole fence down. Uh, for the, so anybody could walk into pool. Um, and that's, you know, as a safety thing that I was concerned about, he, he had, um. Fence back, you know, safety fence back up that day. And, um, I was like I said, I just, just, uh. I'm just proud of those guys. They did such a good job and fast. Um, and I appreciate all the volunteers who come out to help and, um. I know there's going to be a lot of, a lot of work that we need to do over there. I'm sure you've got some ideas and some numbers, maybe.
One of the things, uh, you know, we talked about in the tornado, we dodged a bullet. Repark and water park took the brunt of, I believe, of the city's damage. I think they got the, uh, the biggest share. We have one, one light pole in the area that is just being really bad. It's been about fifteen or twenty feet off the ground. We know from lines one two years ago, that's what we had minimum thirty-eight thousand dollars. And then we're going to have to have a company come in and next round, pull them again, throw them up, make sure that's right. We're still waiting for a bid on that. We had a contractor come out and look at all the lights on all the baseball and softball fields. Uh, someone named her sixty thousand dollars. There's not a light up there that's not turned and we have probably forty that were damaged or broken. So, um. We, we, just the lift alone for them to work on is over five thousand dollars.
We did meet with the adjuster last Tuesday. And, uh, he spent all day here on our property, went back and forth and then came back, sat in my office and kind of. Helped coach me through the process. And so that way we made sure that everything was turned into the state properly. And so we're just really waiting to hear back from him on depreciation values and, and what they're willing to pay. And so once we get those numbers. Then we can really reach out to you guys and start moving forward on repairing our, our aquatics center in our field.
I mean, are, are we thinking, you know, because I don't, you know. All of us going out there and, you know, picking up the stuff and, you know, the roofs are damaged and all the, the buildings around there, the fences are all tore down. I don't know if there's anything structurally wrong with the pool or, you know, that because half the fence was inside the pool.
We haven't had it inspected yet. Uh, I had actually visited with the mayor, uh, at the pool, talked to the adjuster. Uh, I'm going to have a pool company come in and, and walk around. That is actually a cap for that waiting pool. So it has to be done by a pool contractor. It won't be just a manual contractor that's concrete. And so, uh, we're going to get ready to get bids on that because I've all got to be correct.
I guess my next question is, is it going to be able to be done by?
Everything will be up in operational with, with. Except for to maybe the way. Weather will permit for the contest.
I mean, there's a lot of damage up there.
But, uh, all we're waiting on is the insurance adjuster will start going back to the best.
Are there not any, like, say, emergency funds that they could allocate?
There was not a. I believe the judge is on the phone with the mayor and he said he would, uh.
Yeah, he, he declared it an emergency and we. We had John Luther from Emergency Management come in and, you know, it was a time where there was no room in my office. Because we had everyone, all the elected official people from Walmax office came down with this and we just didn't know. The, the blessing of that tornado kind of happened was that less of our citizens was impacted. But you have to have so much of an impact before state and federal funding comes in. The, the wonderful thing about our insurance is that it's a, it's a one-hit deduction. And so because it's a, a single storm that, that hit multiple areas, it's not that we have to pay a deductible on each one. It is just our single deductible and run like it should be. We're just waiting to hear back from the adjuster on, on what they'll pay in depreciation value is what we worry about. Anything else, sir? All right, police department, Doug Stumble. All right, police department, Doug Stumble.
Chief.
Uh, I thought Jaycee said busy. Um, it's not a short supply or calls or work. We had two old things. We filled one of those. We lost officer Juan Hernandez. We went to Bick County. He literally lives. Um, you know, it's stone's throw from Bick County, so it made sense. Um, so he kindly referred one of his friends who works in Bick County. He's living in Prairie Grove. Um, it's kind of like they, they obviously don't like to drive, get to drive, uh, in the morning or evening to Bickville where you, I will see why they wouldn't want to switch. So. So we're set good. So we're getting a certified officer, but we're getting another certified officer. Um, and we've been interviewing the past week. Uh, we got a couple other additional certified applicants. And, uh, we actually made an offer today and usually give them a day or two, just the research, you go on proper fantasy, you know, talk about the ship, the schedule, pay. So we're waiting on that response. So, um, which is good for us. What we see in Dustin Lee, who showed up for the picture, he'll go to the academy. In Springdale, we was able to get you on into the academy. Springdale, that was sent him all the way to Camden, uh, which is huge. Just the process getting somebody into police academy is, it's, it's quite a process. So unless you just kind of just write and you had the, you just, you're a commercial or whatever. Uh, academy, so then, um, Shop With a Cop will be December seventh. And I'm not sure the final numbers. Um, I don't know if the mayor, when, depending on, you know, I know we all are high and but it looks like it's gonna be another year. A lot of kids, a lot of families. So we're looking forward to it and.
I, I don't know the numbers. We usually do a hundred a year. I just haven't talked to stills, anyone about it. And then it's just a, a negative impact of whatever they did at, uh, back to school. And I usually do twenty-five and said at least seventy-five for Christmas if, if they kept with the same rules. And that's, uh, and that's spending, well, we, we upped it again. So I think we spent twenty-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
On that one.
You know.
Inflation.
Count for this and, uh, so people with this money, you know, throughout the years, you know, we do the back to school, you know, the Christmas shopping. Always there's a family needing this, if it's, you know, during school year, you know, counseling schools that wanted a job. So, um, somebody has a house, so we, we, you know, help out, you know, some of those kids need throughout the year as well with some of those. It's, it's a good program. It's going great. Our fundraiser is still doing and, you know, obviously the community, we all know the beauty of these. Uh, people just give you money. I was literally getting fuel, um, last weekend. At one stop and then the gentleman approached me and, you know, I have a couple from this year that we, we'll, you know, I, I hate to just kind of wear people out, but we do get the money. We have to go business owners. Bringing people for the office to spend money. Uh, this gentleman, he didn't want, he don't want no credit. They're saying, hey, literally reached his wallet, pulled out two one hundred dollar bills. And gave it to him right then just for the shop and cop. We get all those people, people still do that, which I think something saves.
Sure. Thank you, chief.
I, I understand you got a certificate of appreciation from all the dentists in the area for your.
Our truck or tree.
Wait, I was thinking, Dan, you come, go ahead.
I understand you got an appreciation from all the dentists in the area.
Yes.
For truck or tree.
Yeah, they, they love that name.
Did you ever get a head count or a guesstimation?
No, you know, every year we go to this and every year we say we want to like, everybody's like, you know, the employees, the non-employees, the must-. Quicker and have to stand to engage.
That's gonna be Chris Workman Junior next year.
So, so I, I think we typically ask people, different people that've been to them. And I think, you know, to have those conversations with everybody, it's like twenty-five hundred to three thousand people. And that's, I think that's really good to get.
That's a great turnout.
It was.
It was weather great, so.
Thank you again, chief. Long range plan and breed rig?
I was curious for Larry or Jaycee or, uh, or.
Rob wouldn't either.
One fourteen ago. There's a guy out here.
I have it pulled out, the girl's, uh, or yeah, uh, South Park townhomes. It was first thing.
Yes, and, uh, they were probably on the January, the, uh, agenda for a preliminary class. What they're proposing is an actual townhouse subdivision, not a large scale development. Uh, each townhouse will be on its own individual lot, even though it's, you know, they're connected. Um, was there twenty of them?
Nineteen of them.
Nineteen of them total. And, uh, I think we gave them the indication that we would be, uh, agreeable to doing a public alley through the property, which will allow us to have access to water meters, trash dumpsters and that sort of thing. Uh, so each one of these townhouses will be on its own lot and we saw individually.
Each lot has to have its own certain conditions for the department to help. So we didn't want to have like meters and all those departments out by the road and so. Maybe the public access even through there.
So they will build what has been described as a very attractive alley. Is that what? We don't know what attractive alley looks like.
By the kettle or butterfly somewhere.
No, no, this is next to the mill. Uh, that lot, corner lot next to the mill.
That's like, it was, uh, like a young high striver. He was having some issues with her neighbor that I won't get into, but, uh, she felt like it's a hardship and I think the planning commission kind of agreed that it was somewhat of a hardship. Uh, they kind of compromised with her. Jaycee helped me twenty feet from the front of the house.
Yes.
I heard it keep falling high and then she's gotta go back down to the thirty-six inches. So give her some privacy between herself and the neighbor. It's an issue. Uh, they gave her a variance of twenty feet from the front of the house. And she's got about forty foot out to the road. So it's about a half a yard.
Um, we're adding Mr. Vines. And then was there something not on the agenda?
There, we, uh, added it, but we have since, they'll be coming back to the planning commission. So we'll get to know them. You have, there were a lot of discussion about mixed use development at the corner of Butler and, uh, Heritage Parkway. Uh, it'll be coming back to the, uh, agenda next month.
That should have been it, Mr. Hellrich. That was it, right?
Yeah.
Um, seeing you, Sana.
Last day, he didn't have any news. I think when they were gonna have their Christmas party or Christmas breakfast, like they used to have, he said they don't have the schedule yet. So I don't have anything.
Well, because at the same time, we're not really doing that anymore.
I think they still do that, don't they?
I don't know.
I think they do.
And.
Always a big turnout at that.
Their Wheels on Wheels program received a three thousand dollar donation from the Lions Club.
Yes.
That's good.
Sorry, sorry. That's great.
Thank you to the Lions Club. And with that, library, Tony Cunningham.
Well, I know the superintendent needs to get down to the bus bar and make sure all the vehicles are ready for the little children in the morning. So I'll make it short. Uh, their checkouts are about fifteen hundred checkouts more this October through last year. And they've got a blood drive scheduled for December the sixth. Their last one, their quota was fifteen and they got eighteen. And my wife went down and gave blood. She said it doesn't hurt. So all of you that need to go.
You go on.
And, uh.
Come try planting out there.
And the friends of the library and the library are gonna go in together, maybe get some trees planted around the playground area that they have down there. And friends of the library have a book sale Saturday after Thanksgiving, which will be thirtieth to be outside because the library will be closed. As all the other city offices.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay.
That's all I have from the library.
And with that, we'll move on to announcements. I put a few things on y'all page, but let's just go ahead and start with what we added tonight, which is that we'll have a special meeting on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. Inside of our training room, that'll be a special meeting to go over the budget. Uh, Shop With a Cop, chief brought that up earlier. They have an eighties trivia night this Saturday. It's from six to ten. Tickets on sale online for thirty dollars a ticket or fifty dollars a couple.
Twelve seven.
December seven.
That's what I said, didn't I? Oh, yeah, I thought. Oh, no, I'm thinking of it. Yes, I'm sorry. December seventh. I, I literally says it on there. Twelve seven. This, let me get to this Saturday because this Saturday is the, the twenty-third. And it is the downtown benefit for Cam, the, the young man that has cancer. And they're doing a cornhole tournament and a auction at Joe Ben's Food Court venue. Mr. Alt, you may have to help me. Does it start at three o'clock? Is it three to six, I think?
I thought people volunteer down there. They're gonna be serving food and selling dinner and deals down there as well.
I think it's three to six this Saturday.
Saturday? Yes.
This Saturday.
Saturday. I'm pulling up this Saturday. Yes. Okay, the cornhole tournament arrives by two thirty to enter your team. It's forty dollars a team. The event is from three to seven, live music, free food, games, desserts, raffles, auctions, tie options. Uh, they are gonna accept donations at the events via Venmo or cash check.
And this Saturday, three to seven, two thirty, if you're gonna be on, uh, cornhole.
Where are you being, is it, is it?
I do have one little thing.
Listen.
There will be a special election December the third for a runoff position on our own city council.
And don't forget December fourteenth, which will be a big day in the city. The Coco Crawl Parade, uh, Terrariums.
Yeah. Is everyone picking up on that? We have a special election. Well, both members have already left, but we have a special election for, um,
City Council.
For city council position that, that's gonna take Rick Clayton's spot.
Nick Clayton's spot.
And, uh, that is on December third. And that'll be at the Prairie Grove Christian Church. And we also have December fourteenth, which is the Coco Crawl. It's the Christmas parade and it's the tour of homes. I believe you can buy tickets for the tour of homes inside city hall. And then and then December seventh, and I'm sorry because I started that earlier, was the Shop With a Cop Eighties Trivia Night. And the elementary school host, uh, a holiday night, Coco Community Leaders reading to Christmas stories, reading Christmas stories on December fifth, which is also our planning commission. So next planning commission is December fifth. And then we'll have our normal council meeting on December sixteenth. And I believe that's it. Is there any other announcements?
The, Larry, the battlefield reenactment. Is that December seventh also?
There's a lot of stuff going on.
Well, say it, say it out loud.
The next Masonic breakfast is December seventh.
Yeah, that's the day of the the shootout over in the battlefield.
So the battlefield is December seventh and the Masonic breakfast is December seventh.
So come get your breakfast and then go watch the shootout.
You know, you know, you're in the country, Timmy.
Mr. Bayer, since how you.
Seventh and the eighth.
Since how you covered everything on your agenda, I move to, uh, adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. And a second, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
Y'all have a great night.